Meeting called to order. This is the April 22nd. Mayor Council meeting, Borough of Oakland. Would the clerk please read the statement of compliance?
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law, duly announced, advertised, and posted in the municipal building. The meeting will adjourn no later than 10:00 p.m. unless the majority of the council members that are present vote to extend the time.
All rise for a pledge of allegiance. Councilwoman Pignotelli, would you leave us in the pledge?
Yeah, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a quick moment of silence. B.C., thank you. Would clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Kamala?
Present.
Council President McCann? Councilman Pignotelli?
Here.
Councilwoman Rose?
Here.
Councilman Salianni?
Here.
Councilman Slisinski?
Here.
Councilman Talamini?
Here.
Do we have a motion to excuse? Councilwoman McCann?
So moved.
For a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to the mayor's report, I got several items here. Just some construction updates on what's going on in town. The Oakland Drugs Building application should be coming in front of the planning board either in May or June, so we should see movement on the Oakland Drugs Building. The McDonald's coming into town, there's a preconstruction this week with our borough engineer, so that project's moving along. The piece of the property by the Exxon on the corner of Courthouse Place and 202. There's also a, our borough engineer is going to be meeting with the applicant as well for a preconstruction meeting probably next week from what I'm being told. Just so everybody knows, probably know by now already, I forgot to mention at the last meeting, the telephone pole with the light in Busch Plaza has been removed. Couple announcements, there's a paper shredding event, May 17th, 9 to 1:00 p.m. at the, down at the Borough Hall parking lot. I just want to thank everybody for about, with the Easter egg hunt, it was a success with a record turnout. I want to thank all the volunteers and public events, fire department, first aid squad, and all the members of the Chamber of Commerce that came out to really help with this, with this program. So thank you, everybody. Big announcement, Patriots Way Bridge. I'm sure people living up in the Patriots Way, up in the reserve, have noticed equipment's being moved in. I'm happy to announce that the bridge deck will be paved this Friday. They're going to be pouring the deck. It's going to be approximately 22 truckloads of cement. They're going to be pouring 11 on one side, 11 on the other, starting at 8:00 in the morning. They expect the pour to be completed sometime between 11 and 12. After that, you're going to have 22 employees down there doing the finish work, and that's probably going to run through about 5, 6:00 o'clock at night. So that's a really big event that's taking place down there. What I'm going to be doing is after the deck is poured, I know the official day for completion is still January of next year, but I can assure you that we are way ahead of schedule. Once the deck is poured, I'll be able to re, I'll be able to meet with our engineers and contractor, reassess exactly where we are, see if we can come up with a more permanent date of opening of the bridge. Also, road program update, since we passed the budget at the last meeting, we expect the road program should be ready for the May council meeting, so we can award that, so the borough can start the road program. Yoppo Avenue update, all the plans and specifications have been submitted for the state for final review. Once that's done, that project will also go off for bid. And I just want to also let everybody know that the Bergen County History Day is this Saturday, and Van Allen House is participating, that's going to be, it's going to be open house from 10 to 4 this Saturday. And also keep in mind that there's going to be a townwide cleanup, as we have every year, and for more information, you can certainly check the Borough website for more information. That's all I have on my report. Do we have a motion to open to public?
So moved.
All favor?
Aye.
A second?
Who wants a second?
A second.
Second, who?
All favor?
Aye.
Anybody wish to speak?
You answered my questions.
Okay, well, not seeing a motion to close?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
All right, we're up to approval of minutes, April 8th, 2025. Do we have a motion to approve, or does anybody have any changes?
Motion to approve the minutes, as is?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're up to April 8th, 2025 executive minutes. If anybody has any changes, they can only be done in the executive session.
Motion to approve the executive minutes, as is?
Thank you, Mr. Salianni, do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Slisinski. All favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving on to special announcements. Okay, we have several here. Authorized raffle license RL 1544 for the Sports Association of Oakland for a June 6 50-50 to support the 12U Cooperstown Tournament Recreation Field at 24 Lollar Drive. We have authorized raffle license RL 1545 for the Sports Association of Oakland for June 6 raffle to support the 12U Cooperstown Tournament. We have authorized raffle license RL 1546 for Valley Middle School PTO on May 17th, 2025 for off-premise 50-50 to support the Valley Middle School PTO at VMS at 71 Oak Street in Oakland. Authorized raffle license RL 1547 for the Oakland Elks Lodge, Lodge number 2167 on May 17th, 2025 for an on-premises raffle to support the Elks organization at Elks Lodge at 33 Rantle Valley Road in Oakland. Authorized raffle license RL 1548 for the Oakland Elks Lodge, 2167 on May 17th, 2025 for a 50-50 to support the Elks organization at Elks Lodge at 33 Rantle Valley Road, Oakland. We have authorized a social affairs permit for Oakland, New Jersey Lodge number 2167 Elks for a beef steak dinner fundraiser on May 17th, 2025 for support of local families and organizations at the Oakland Elks Lodge, 33 Rantle Valley Road. Authorized a social affairs permit for Lakeland Detachment of the Marine Corps League for a poker night on May 17th, 2025 for the support of local families and organizations at the American Legion at 65 Oak Street in Oakland. Authorized raffle license RL 1549 for the Marine Corps League Detachment 744 on May 17th, 2025 for a 50-50 to support veterans at 65 Oak Street in Oakland, New Jersey. And authorized raffle license RL 1550 for Marine Corps League Detachment 744 on May 17th for a raffle to support the veterans of 65 Oak Street, Oakland, New Jersey. We'll do these following as a consent agenda, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Anybody wish to pull any out? Any questions? All favor?
Aye.
All right, very good. All right, I have the following appointments. I have for citizenship leadership forum for Tessa Fleeson, she wants to apply for the Public Events Committee. I have Jim Folkerts for Public Events Committee, and I also have Marisol Kowalowski for the Arts Committee. These are mayor all appointments with council consent.
I will, as a public events chair, I will second the public events recommendations.
Okay.
So you said, who've motioned, who is the first?
Who made the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Oh, you're going to be the first?
Your motion.
Second.
And the rest is seconding?
All favor?
Aye.
One more to make.
The other one is for Marisol Kowalowski for the Arts Committee.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Salianni, do you have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
All right, very good. Congratulations, all three of you, you're on the committees. I have two proclamations. I have a very important one. This one is for Eda Eldas Bardo. She's celebrating her 100th birthday. God bless. Whereas it a privilege and an honor for the mayor and council of the Borough of Oakland to recognize and celebrate milestone occasions in the lives of its residents, and whereas Eldas Bardo will celebrate her 100th birthday on April 15th, 2025, a remarkable occasion that represents a full century of life, wisdom, and experience, and whereas during the course of her life, Eldas Bardo has witnessed and contributed to a century of extraordinary changes, growth, and advancement in our nation and the world, and whereas she has served as a source of strength, inspiration, and love to her family, friends, and the greater community, leaving a legacy that exemplifies values of perseverance, kindness, and dedication, and whereas the Borough of Oakland is proud to honor Eldas Bardo for reaching her significant milestone, and for the many ways she has touched the lives of those around her. Now therefore be proclaimed that I Mayor Eric Kamala, on behalf of the Borough of Oakland, do hereby extend a heartfelt congratulations and best wishes to Elda Spardo on a joyous occasion of her 100th birthday, and urge all citizens to join in celebrating this momentous event. I witness here onto set my hand and cause the seal of the Borough of Oakland to be affixed on this day, April 15th, 2025. Happy birthday, Elda.
Happy birthday.
Happy congratulations, Elda.
I also have an Arbor Day proclamation. I will give this to, who's on, Shatri?
Hi.
Sure. There's also a note on the bottom.
Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion or our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and the beauty of our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I Eric Kamala, Mayor of the Borough of Oakland, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 25th, 25-5 as Arbor Day. In our community of Oakland, I urge the citizens, all citizens, to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, to support our city's urban forestry program, and further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. Sapping giveaways are on May 27th at the library from 10 to 2. Are you sure it's May or is it April?
April.
April 27th.
April, I'm sorry, April.
Yeah.
Good catch, thank you.
No problem.
All right. All right, now we're up to, we're going to do a resolution that will open up the public. So this is for the Bergen County Open Space Park Improvements Grant. This is 25-142 to authorize grant application for Bergen County Fiscal Year 2025 Open Space Trust Fund Municipal Program for Greado Park. We're looking, the borough's looking to construct three basketball courts down at Greado Park. At this time, do we have a motion open to public, and then anybody wish to comment on this?
So moved, so open.
Does that make sense? All favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the public wish to comment on the bus? Not seeing anybody, do you have a motion to close?
How about from up here?
We're going to get to that.
Okay.
Motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
All favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right. At this point, I'll make a motion introduce, and then what we'll do is open for a comment. Do we have a motion introduce?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All favor? Aye? Any discussion?
Yes. Pat? Seems like quite a bit of money for our share. Our share would be $150,000. Couple of, I mean, what initiated this proposal to put in three courts at Greado Park? Because I mean, honestly, I mean, we have basketball courts down at the Rec Field, don't we?
We, the basketball courts down at the Rec Field are actually part of our own school. They're not, the recreation does not have basketball courts on the Rec Field.
And what spurred this?
This came from the Chairman Guadino, from the Rec Committee?
I just can't see, people don't, I mean, look, Greado Park is beautiful, I understand that, but I don't see, I don't see people going down there to play basketball. I mean, I can see it using the basketball courts for Valley Middle School, which they are open, I mean, they're not closed just during school, I mean, they're not closed after school. I just think $150,000 is a lot of money. Where are we getting this from? Or is it coming out of capital improvement?
So Mayor, if I can?
Yep.
So in our discussions over what would be an appropriate project for this year's grant request, kind of turned on two things. Well, where did recreation think there was a need for additional facilities? And that's where the idea of additional basketball courts came from. Apparently, they've gotten some feedback that people would like to see some additional facilities along those lines. And then it became a matter of, all right, well, where would, where would we cite them? And really, we started looking at Greado Park and ways to better utilize that facility and perhaps add some amenities and build it out a little bit, to be able to offer more to the public. There was a suitable spot there, past the dog park, so we would rehab part of the asphalt to extend down the freshly paved asphalt, and then there's an area, I think it may have had a building on it, it's a concrete pad that's been overgrown, and that would kind of serve as the base for the court area. So that's sort of where it came from. The projected cost, and that includes clearing of the site, asphalt, fencing, acrylic surface, the whole nine yards is projected to be with engineering. Okay, so that $300,000 includes soft cost as well, about $300,000. We would ask for $150,000 from Bergen County, the other half would come from the Open Space Trust Fund.
I just don't see the, I personally, I don't see the need for it. I've never had anybody ask me about basketball in Oakland, playing basketball. I just, I don't see the need.
Maybe this will help, Councilman Pignotelli. I was originally on Greado Park Committee, and I was part of the Rec Commission, and we had always talked about putting the basketball courts down there. We originally started Greado Park, it was one of the things that was there, so this was discussed previously, and I just, you know, because I was on the committee, I remember it, but I actually think it'd be, help use the park a little bit more, so I think it's actually a good idea.
I mean, Councilman, we're really look, this is really, you know, now we got the man, man shell in there, they're cleaning up the park. Our rec complex is basically built out in full. I mean, now we're looking at Greado Park and starting to expand our facilities. Any further discussion? Not seeing any? Roll call?
Councilman Pignotelli?
No.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilman Salianni?
Yes.
Councilman Slisinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion passed.
Motion passed, all right. We're up to resolutions. Do this as a consent agenda. We have 25-143, authorized recreation refunds, 25-144, Chapter 159, 2025 Drug Driving Enforcement, 25-145, Chapter 159, National Opioid Settlement, Walgreens, 25-146, Chapter 159, National Opioid Settlement, Janssen Pharmaceuticals, 25-147, amend 2024 Losap List, 25-148, authorized hire of seasonal summer help, 25-149, designate Kathleen Gernsy as the deputy clerk, 25-150, memorandum of understanding for summer hours, 25-151, authorized sidebar agreements, vacation schedule, 25-152, authorized auction of bicycles, 25-153, award contract for 2025 Ford Mavericks, 25-154, award contract Boswell Engineering for PFAS Treatment Systems at Soon's Field, 25-155, award bid Harvard Drainage and Water Improvements, and 25-156, Patriots Way Bridge Change Order Number 2. Anybody wish to pull any out?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes.
25-154.
154, Mr. Pignotelli, okay.
Can you pull out 25-150, 151?
150, 151. Anybody else? I just want to pull out 25-156 for Mayor real quick. Mr. Salianni, 25-150 and 151?
I would be to abstain, so.
Abstain, okay. Mr. Pignotelli, 25-154.
I know I'm going to sound like a broken record, but I really would like to see another engineering, another engineering firm bid on this. I mean, it's $201,000. I mean, even if we save $10,000, it can't be that there's only one engineer in the state of New Jersey that can design PFAS, because there's 560-some municipalities, and I'm sure we're not the only one that has to design a PFAS treatment system. $201,000 is a lot of money. I don't see why on earth we can't try, even try. If nobody bids us, or sends in us, fine, but we should try to start saving money someplace. And I, I would like to see it, I would like us to start here. And I like comment from the rest of the council, because I'm getting tired of bringing this up. We're not getting any additional bidding, or go one engineer, you know, one engineer only, and it can't be, they're the only one in the state of New Jersey that designs these systems.
Since you're soliciting feedback, I'll provide it.
Please, thank you.
So, a couple of things. Yes, we should be bringing out the right thing, I would agree, but for this project, in my opinion, Boswell has created the other, the other PFAS in town. They are part of the original design, and they, and their project did a very, and their project did very well with the water the last three years, and this is a continuation of what was already built, so I think they would be, I think they are the right person for this role. I think you should view all these as independent of each other, and what's the best for each other. So in this case, I, that's why I think Boswell's the right choice.
I just know we have time. It's not like this has to be done next week or next month. I understand there's a, there's a period of time that, lead time to order equipment, et cetera, but, you know, we are in compliance. I know if, if and when the federal government and the state change the requirement, we might have to make a different decision, but I think we have time. We qualified another engineering firm. I don't see why. Let's ask. We don't get penalized for asking, but we might benefit from asking.
Anybody else wish to comment? No? I do want to comment, Councilman Pignotelli. There is a bit of a time crunch on this. We are current, we currently did apply for two federal grants on this, one through Senator Kim's office last, I want to say, two weeks ago. We had a follow-up meeting this past week, and also with Senator Booker. We're also looking at a window through our Congresswoman as well, to apply for a grant through her as well. So as what Mr. Salianni said, I mean, they already did, they've already basically done the majority of the work on this, it's just going to be a duplication of what was essentially done, already done of the other three wells.
If it's going to be duplication, why is it 201,000? I mean, if they're taking plans that have already been done and modifying to fit in this?
No, Mayor.
No, hang on, hang on, hang on. It's not that simple. Go ahead, Richard.
Right, so, so one of the reasons that you're not, and it's not bidding, I just, sorry.
I know it's not bidding.
It's the QPA in me, it's not bidding.
Proposal.
You're asking for proposals. But bear in mind, you did in a way, right? There was a competitive process that was used, as we do every year, to retain a water and sewer engineer, right? And Boswell was awarded that contract. Boswell is the entity, the engineering entity that knows our system, that has experience, proven experience, working with the I-Bank on our behalf, filing for the applications, doing a design and bidding on a project that worked out very well for us, on a very tight timeframe. And if you look at their proposal, it goes into great detail in terms of what makes up that, that cost. And yes, it's not an insignificant cost at all, which is, you know, and that's just the tip of the iceberg, because the, you know, construction cost is likely to be 20 times that. That's why we're pursuing CDS applications with the federal government, why we're going to be on a parallel track pursuing funding through the I-Bank as well. There's a lot to the application, there's a lot to dealing with the I-Bank and getting through that process, securing the permits that you need. We know the type of filtration system that we are using, okay? But it's going to probably be twice the size in capacity, if not more than, than twice the capacity, of the other three individual units that were installed, okay? So it's not an off-the-shelf design that they can just say, here's your spec, and throw some boilerplate on it and go out to bid. There's a tremendous amount of work involved here.
So are you saying we can't make application for these funds unless we have it designed?
What they want to see is that we are ready to proceed.
Shovel ready.
Okay, so, so let's, so let's play this.
So you're saying we have to have it designed in order to make the application?
Not in order to make the application, okay?
For the grant.
But, but let's, but let's play this out. So we have, and I pointed this out in my report, we're complying with the New Jersey MCLs, maximum contaminant levels, right? For Soon's Well Field that has no treatment on it. For certain wells, and certain compounds at certain wells, we would not be in compliance with the new EPA MCLs that take effect in 2027, which is four parts per troy. It is an exceedingly low level. All right, so one, you have a desire to remove all PFAS from our water supply, period, okay? But there's also going to be a compliance issue that seems like it's far away, but when you're looking at the lead time it takes to design and bid and get through the I-Bank process, and to comply with the federal grant requirements, if we are successful in getting the CDS application, we really don't have that much time. We need to work diligently on this. It's likely that we're not going to hear anything on the federal funding until possibly next spring. And what will happen then is that award, that federal award authorized by Congress, will be shuttled off to a relevant federal department, and we start the process over. Another application, we start from ground one, meeting all the various federal requirements, environmental review, you name it. So we actually don't have a whole lot of flexibility here in terms of trying to move this forward and meeting the deadlines that are on the horizon.
Well, I keep hearing they've applied to the I-Bank before, they know the process, the I-Bank. It can't be that Boswell is the only engineering firm that applies to the I-Bank, or applies for grants, or fills out applications. Can't be one firm only in the state of New Jersey. Cannot be. If that's true, they got a monopoly. I just, I, I still, I'm still saying, I think we should at least ask for a proposal from our other qualified engineering firm. This way we know we're getting, we're getting a good price. $20,000 is a lot of money. We could save 10, 15, 25,000. I don't see why we shouldn't at least look at that. What I'm saying is, let's look at it. But if you don't want to wait, I'm only one vote.
Any further discussion? Not seeing any? Let's just move on. Somebody make a motion to approve 25-154, award contract Boswell Engineering?
Did we do the other one?
We have to do all?
We have to, are we going to do the consent first?
No, no, I would just want to take this one off the table.
The 154.
Yeah. Motion approved, 25-154?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Councilman Pignotelli?
No.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilman Salianni?
Yes.
Councilman Slisinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
Okay. Let's do the consent minus 25-150 and 151. Actually, let's adjust 25-156. This change order, I wanted this one pulled out, this is the second change order for the Patriots Way Bridge. There is, what we want to do is, we want to have the road paved all the way from Route 202, all the way down to the bridge. Mr. Coons, there is money left in the grant to cover this, and I think it's a good use of that money to close out this job once and for all.
Is there money left in the grant?
There is money left in the grant.
Okay.
Okay?
And we're sure these are the only change orders, right? No surprise, change orders that are going to come down the line, that, that happened already.
This is number two, the number one was the water free call for $30,000, the water pipe.
Right, we're on top of the change order. We're on top of the change order.
We're on top of it. I actually, I actually had requested through our meetings to do this work because we do have the money and the funds available.
Right, right, yes. But there's nothing, nothing that changed that we didn't realize.
Councilman, tell me this question. Is already open work that can turn to a change order as a fact?
No.
I don't think so. Mr. Coons, I don't think so, no?
No, I think that, you know, we're on top of things. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so let's do consent agenda, minus 25-150 and 151. Do we have a motion to approve?
And 154, right?
We did that already.
We did that, right. I'm just saying.
So moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Hold on. So, we're doing the consent on, we're not pulling 156 out. You just wanted to have a discussion.
Yep. Just have discussion.
Okay. Sorry about that. Back to the rapage, sorry. Okay. Consent agenda. Councilman Pignotelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilman Saliani?
Yes.
Councilman Slasinski?
Yes.
And Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
Did we get a motion and a second?
Yep.
Yeah, we did.
Oh. I didn't catch that. Okay.
We need to know who it was though. Steven.
It was Steven Kevin.
Steven Kevin.
Steven Kevin. Okay. Sorry about that.
All right, now we're down to 25-150 and 151. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Talamini, Pignotelli?
Talamini.
Roll call.
Councilman Pignotelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilman Saliani?
I'm staying.
Councilman Slasinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
Okay.
You guys should have won.
Moving on to ordinance, this is the final adoption of 25 Code 963 to amend Chapter 59 Land Use Code concerning commencement of completeness, period. There was a de minimis change that was put into your packet that basically just reworded a sentence. So, the old version stated time limitations. The time of the board's review shall not begin to run until the submission of a complete application with the required fee. If the application for development is found to be incomplete, the applicant shall be notified thereof within 45 days of submission of such application or shall be deemed to be properly submitted as of the date of submission with payments in full of both the required filing fee and escrow fees. All they're doing is moving the sentence around. The way it reads is time limitations. The time of the board's review shall not begin to run until the submission of a complete application with payment in full of both required filing fee and escrow funds. If the application for development is found to be incomplete, the applicant shall be notified thereof within 45 days of submission of such application or shall be deemed to be properly submitted as of the date of submission. That was the only change. They just simply moved the sentence around. At this time, do I have a motion to open to public?
So moved.
Anybody wish to talk about 25 Code 963? Not seeing any. Motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
Second? All favor?
All right.
Okay. Do we have a motion to, for final adoption of 25 Code 963 amendment?
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Councilman Pignotelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilman Saliani?
Yes.
Councilman Slasinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
All right, we're up to work session flood damage prevention ordinance. Mr. Coons?
Thank you, Mayor. So, as you may know, we have a chapter in our code that regulates activities in the floodway, floodplain. And what FEMA and the NJDEP have done, they've come up with a new model or changes to their model flood damage control code or ordinance. Apparently, over the years, they found some disconnects between various codes that affect development in the floodplain. So, this is meant to sort of synchronize Uniform Construction Code, National Flood Insurance Regulations, and the New Jersey Flood Hazard Area Control Act to reduce some confusion in administering it and provide some clarity for people looking to do activities in the floodway as well. So, there's a variety of technical changes. I included a full FEMA PowerPoint document for anybody that really wanted to get into the weeds with it. One of the critical things is it would increase the amount of freeboard required above base flood elevation for any substantial improvements to structures. It makes another variety of technical changes. So, the original draft that we had come up with based on the model was sent to the DEP. What you have is the version that has their comments back. There are a few things there that we need to address, which I'll be doing later this week with our CRS coordinator. And then we would be looking to introduce the ordinance amendment at the May 20 meeting so we could adopt in June because there is a June deadline. Does anybody have any questions?
Not seeing any. All right. This is an exciting one. Mr. Coons, solid waste collection shared services act.
I'm sorry. Are we moving forward with that on the next meeting or moving into?
Yeah.
Okay. Just making sure.
And if in your spare time, you're reading through all of those details on everything, right, and you had a question, just let me know. Okay, yes, the next one is exciting to the extent that solid waste collection is exciting. So, let me just sort of preface this and give everybody some background. As I know you, up here, you're all aware, the boroughs faced, and not just the borough, really municipalities throughout the state that contract out for garbage collection have seen just huge price increases for the cost of solid waste collection, you know, bid after bid after bid. There's been a real lack of competition statewide for better part of a decade now, and that's been reflective in the prices that we've received, you know, when we go out to bid. If you compare what we're paying this year of 1.7-plus million dollars for collection to what we were paying 10 years ago, it's about a 190% increase during that period. And there have been four years in particular where costs really skyrocketed. So, and that's despite trying to attract additional bidders, despite looking to make some changes to our bid specs to make it easier for people to bid. But the competition just hasn't been there. So, we've been searching for ways to find an alternative. A couple of years ago, we partnered with our other flood communities and did a grant-funded shared service study to see if, whether it was in-house or on a contract basis, there were some savings to be had by working with our other communities to offer a joint service. There were a lot of challenges that came out of that study. It was a good exercise, but really nothing that bore fruit. The savings for at least one of the towns wasn't really there. But we sort of kept searching. We entered into negotiations with Pomp and Lakes back in January. They have in-house garbage collection now, and it turns out they were looking to, they're searching for a partner to expand their service. So, all this has come together rather quickly. But it appears that a shared service agreement with Pomp and Lakes is not only viable, but it would be in our best interest to do instead of contracting starting next year. So, what Pomp and Lakes is able to do for us is to provide the same level of, essentially the same level of service that we have now in terms of frequency. Twice a week pickup for garbage, alternating commingled in paper once a week for recycling, bulky waste pickup with every garbage collection, and yard waste during the same sort of time period that we have now. The nice thing that they, that they're able to do is offer residents' use of their recycling facility as well. So, if people have materials that they don't want to hold around for their pickup day, they would be able to go to Pomp and Lakes and use their facility free of charge, all right? So, for that, the cost, you know, we're paying about one, almost 1.8 million dollars this year. The cost next year would just be slightly over a million dollars. It's about a 43% cost reduction, and you're looking at saving about $3 million compared to what you're paying currently over a five-year agreement. So, we're recommending that we pursue this, that we enter into an agreement with Pomp and Lakes to start doing our solid waste collection as of January 2026. And what that implementation timeframe looks like is we would be seeking authorization of an agreement that we're currently working on, hopefully at the May 20 meeting. That should give Pomp and Lake enough time to order the additional trucks that they need to. And then coming into the fall, they would take delivery of the equipment, including new dumpsters. They would hire the staff that they need in order to provide the service. And in December, we would do orientation and familiarization training with their staff on the route, and we would be prepared to go January 1, 2026.
Most exciting thing I've heard as far as saving money in 18 years that I'm on the council. Savings of 43% is tremendous. I want to commend Richard Coons for the work he did with this. I sat in on the meeting of the Board and Sewer Committee when we discussed this. He really figured in everything. There's a lot, lot to do to come up with a final figure for us. And Rich, thank you. You did a great job with this.
Thank you.
Rich, I want to expand on Councilman Pignotelli's comments, and maybe it's going to be more for next week. So, the cost savings is phenomenal. Obviously, you said there are other, they've approached other municipalities with the same issue. So, are we the only municipality who's going to take this as a shared service?
No, they had approached one other that was adjacent to them as well. The economics didn't work out with that town the way they worked out for us.
And I'm assuming in the contract, once it comes forth, there'll be a level of services agreement of where we go, right? Understanding shared service saving money, but where they're actually a supplier of ours, so there'll be terms and conditions they have to meet?
Yeah. Essentially, the meat of the agreement is going to be the scope of services that are in our, that's in our current bid spec.
Okay.
You know, so everything that's there in terms of dumpster locations, hours. The only thing that's likely to change a bit is, because this is another public agency providing it, there's more holidays that the staff gets. So, there'll be more days where there's either a skip collection day or a makeup day. I think we have six in the contract now. It's likely to be 14. That'll bring up an issue we'll have to deal with next year if we want to start swapping sides of towns and schedules to sort of even that out over time. But that's something that we have some time to consider. But other than that, all the service levels are the same.
I'm assuming weather events will also impact this because they're using their own employees, their own trucks.
It depends.
Does a weather event will impact pickup?
It depends on, you know, assume you're meaning, let's say, a snowstorm, right? It depends on how heavy of a snowstorm it is and how many resources that they need. And it also depends on the timing, right? If the timing's right, they can do that and pick up garbage, or pick up garbage and then turn their attention to snowplowing. That's sort of case by case. And we're basically a customer, right? That's how this is going to end up. And so, then if we did have an issue, we could complain like a customer and have it resolved. But I'm sure we'll be very, very, very good customers. No, it's really, this is like Mr. Councilman Pignotelli said, it's an amazing thing. It's a big, a big chunk of change that we're saving. Over the course of the contract, how much, how much you think would be saved? Based on how we, how we drew it up, and one of the things we'll have to do next year too is look at the actual budget impact because there is some variability in the pricing depending on when you're building in certain costs into the agreement. We'll probably seek budgetarily to smooth that out over the life of it. But if you're just comparing it to the cost that we're spending this year, and you were just to sort of flat, take that flat going forward, savings would be on the order of close to $3 million. And if you were actually to project out some sort of a cost increase with a bid renewal, let's say 3% a year, something like that, you know, you're looking at more probably about $3.8 million in savings. And the interesting, interesting thing too is, if you look back, because I looked, I looked back to when I started here in 2008, and it's sort of every time we do a bid, I sort of update this chart and track what our costs are. And you can very clearly see in 2016 how it spiked up since then. But if you were to run like a 2% trend line from 2008, this cost next year is slightly under an average 2% increase over the last, over what would that, at that point be, you know, 18 years?
Will there be something, Councilman Talamini brought up a word, if there's a conflict, is there a conflict resolution part to the contract or no? I mean, if there's a problem, do we have to state it in a contract or no?
Right. So, the shared service agreement will have to comply with the shared service law, and there'll be, you know, remedy provisions, termination provisions.
Right.
All of that, all of that will be addressed. Are there, are there issues because we're different counties, across different counties?
No, I asked.
No. No, and we, we have different recycling marketers, but we have the same disposal company. We both use GATA. We're both under contract with them. So, ultimately, the garbage is going to the same place that it is now.
Anybody else?
I think this is amazing.
And now, Mr. Coons, if I remember correctly, Pomp and Lakes Council meeting is going to be discussing this tomorrow at 7:00.
That's correct.
So, I will be in attendance for that, see how that goes. Okay.
Okay. So, we'll move this forward again. I hope to have a, you know, a contract that we can enter into at the next council meeting. And if that changes, I'll let you know.
Thank you. All right, resolution supporting federal tax exemption of municipal bonds?
Mayor, do we want to just?
Oh, yeah. You want to do the kids first?
Yes, please.
Oh, perfect. Is everyone here? Is everybody here?
Oh, you can wait a minute, though.
Okay, we can wait.
She's going to be open to the public?
No, that happened already.
But.
Beginning of the meeting. Do we want to keep going or is all we missed?
Yeah, I mean, we can find.
We'll keep going until somebody.
We'll keep going until you're ready.
Okay. All right, Mr. Coons, resolution supporting federal tax exemption of municipal bonds?
Sure. So, apparently, there's been some discussion in Washington over, I guess as part of their overall budget discussions and finance discussions, over withdrawing the tax exempt status of municipal bonds. I suppose the rationale for that would be the revenue that that may generate from the federal government. However, on the downside, municipal bonds have been tax exempt for over 100 years. It's sort of a cornerstone of the bond market. It's how local governments do their financing when they do need to borrow money, and that offers certain advantages in borrowing costs. So, to lose that tax exemption is likely to increase borrowing costs for municipalities in states. So, the league had brought this issue to our attention and prepared a draft resolution that they're asking towns to consider passing that we'd be able to share with our federal representatives, just stating our support and desire that they, that municipal bonds remain tax exempt.
Okay, and you'll have a resolution prepared for next meeting?
Yep.
Okay. Is everybody here or?
No.
Okay. All right, resolution opposing A2757, authorized conversion of certain office parks and retail centers to mixed-use developments. Mr. Coons?
Thank you. So, this is another issue that came to our attention via the league. If you read their update, they've been tracking this particular piece of legislation for some period of time. It concerns land use. It's called the Stranded Asset Bill, and it would basically take away local decision-making. And for certain properties that meet certain criteria in terms of square footage and type of use, it would basically mandate approval if a developer comes in wanting to do a mixed-use development, okay? So, it would sort of circumvent local land use controls and zoning. This is the sort of thing that you typically use your zoning powers for and the redevelopment statutes for if you have an underutilized piece of property that is in need of redevelopment. There's already tools at each town's disposal to do that. This would preempt that, basically take that control out of, out of your hands for certain developments and just mandate that it could be approved.
So, would it be conflict with our zoning laws?
Potentially, potentially.
It could usurp our local zoning laws.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. And Matt, I don't know if this is, you know, been on, in your land use world, if this has been on the radar.
It has been. I mean, I think most people think it's going nowhere, but I think we should also go on the record as opposing it.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
No.
Mr. Cruz, would you prepare a resolution for next meeting?
Here we go.
Is everybody here? Everybody's here? Okay.
Most of the four of the meeting.
Do you have a second to spend?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
All right. This time, we have a special celebration for the Oakland 4th Grade Girls Travel Basketball Team. I'd like to bring up Councilman Talamini being the rec liaison and the coaches, and you could tell us, and then all the children, so come on up.
I'll leave.
Come on up. Put the girls right here.
Okay. Help people in the middle, help her down. Thank you for letting us. It's exactly the same order that you did for this.
Julie, would you like to tell us about the accomplishment of these young ladies?
I would love to.
Turn around this way so they can, girls, everybody face that way.
I want to recognize our assistant coaches, Rosalie Spinella, who can't be here tonight, and Monica Dimpf. We had, this is the second year these girls have been playing travel basketball together, and they had a near undefeated season, just one loss, plenty of wins, and they worked their way through the playoffs and won the Northwest Bergen-Pasaic Travel Basketball League for the 4th Grade Team.
Wow.
And they're moving up to the 8th next year.
All I want to say is I love my niece Sienna. And what a wonderful team they are. They, you know, it's, it's great seeing these girls play, play basketball at the level that they, they play. It's, it's, they know how to play basketball. There's something else to see, to see them do it, and it's fun to watch them, and, and everyone should get involved with, with Oakland Recreation. And if you could coach, get certified and help coach. It's the greatest thing I ever did. Congratulations, girls.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Also, I just want to say, you know, I really wanted to take a moment, make sure you thank your coaches. They're the ones that got you here, your parents. I mean, bring me to, bring me down to the games every day. But really, girls, it's, as a former coach, as Councilman Talamini said, it's really important. And listen, winning beats losing. Right? But anyway, congratulations, girls. And Coach Julie, I'm going to let you, first of all, I just give you a certificate real quick. Julie, thank you so much.
Thank you.
On behalf of the mayor council, and I'm going to give you these, and you can read off the girls' names.
Great.
We're learning from the stage.
And I'll have them shake your hand.
Yeah, come down. Russ and I come down here.
This is Monica Dimpf. Coach Rosalie Spinella, you want to, I'll take this. Eva Bermudas, come down and shake them here.
Good job, Karen.
Arden Cruz. Collins Dimpf. Ally Paluso. Jenna Sada. Sarah Said. Sienna Spinella.
Would you put everybody for a group shot with your trophies?
Yes. Right, cross both shoulders, shoulder, just like we'll be lined up. Ally, come on in to the middle. Now slide over, make room for everybody.
That's more of a meeting.
Girls, hold your papers up, but don't block your face, okay? Hold them near your belly. All right? Everybody look over here. Right, just look here in the middle first. Ready? One, two, say cheese.
Cheese.
But I need somebody with a, who has a, oh, there you go. Who has a non-apple phone? Come here. My phone is always terrible. Anybody in the room? All right, we'll just take with the apples. Say cheese. Cheese. Awesome.
Congratulations.
Do I have permission to call? Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
You don't want to stay, you can leave.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Sure.
There will take a quick five-minute recess, okay?
All right, we're up to new business.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All favor? All right. All right, new business. Anybody have any new business? Old business. Liaison reports. I'll serve Mr. Talamini.
Liaison reports. Hold on. My rec report is very short, other than to, please, like I said, if you have the time, and if you don't have the time, make the time, coach your kids. It's the greatest thing in the world. Become a coach for Oakland Recreation. The parade for the softball and baseball teams will be on May 31st. That's a fun day. It's a, it's a lot, a lot of fun. You get to see the mayor throw out the first pitch, and, and there's a lot of fun events to do there. That's all I got, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilman Pignotelli.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I have two, two announcements. Team Up to Clean Up is this Saturday, April 26th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00. If you want to participate, meet at the Danny Delia Building. Parents, it's a perfect time for your children to get their points with a.
Volunteer hours.
Volunteer hours here in Oakland, and, and also contribute to our community. So please, please, if you have a child that's ready and raring to go, send them down to the Danny Delia Building, just to make sure he has mostly shirt, pants, long pants, and a pair of work gloves. The other announcement is May 14th, there's going to be a blood drive at the Oakland First Aid Building, starting at 8:00 a.m. We're in need of blood throughout New Jersey, so please, if you can spare a pint, come on down. Oakland First Aid Squad, 8:00 o'clock, 8:00 a.m., May 14th. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Salian.
Thank you. Real quick, we have an update from the OCC. All the OCC committees are looking for members. The television committee, the bulletin board committee, newsletter committee, and the welcome website, social media committee, please contact myself or email OCC@OaklandNewJersey.org to learn more. Information about each committee is also available on the Borough website. Oakland TV can now be watched live on the Borough website and on New Oakland TV app. Those wanting to, those wanting to watch online, please go to www.Oakland-NewJersey.org/communicationscommission and click on the Watch Oakland TV Live button. You can also search Oakland Television on your Android, iPhone, or download the Oakland TV app. The Bulletin Board Committee continues to accept music compositions to add to the music rotation for Oakland TV. If interested, please email markalbalia@OaklandNewJerseyBulletinBoard@gmail.com with your interest and any questions you may have. The next OCC meeting is on May 5th at 7:00 p.m. It'll be held right here in council chambers. Quick update from the Public Events Committee. Public events, as the mayor pointed out at the beginning of the meeting, the Easter egg hunt went over well. Great job by DPW, the Public Events, the Public Events Committee, and First Aid, and everyone else who's there who's supporting access, access for all. We, the next event for big public event is going to be Sunday, May 25th, and that will be our Memorial Day Parade. So anyone who's interested, please reach out to Oakland Public Events to either join or help set up. The parade will start at 1:00 p.m. It'll start by the Grove Street on 202. Fire Department has a quick update. They have, they perform their, they perform their regular, regularly scheduled work on Mondays. They, they drilled for, on air management control. Talk, talk about a fun event. They, to help the firemen manage their, their capacity of their packs, they played a game of dodgeball in their full gear to manage their air. It was good team building communications. So think about it. They're also looking for new members. So we're also going to play dodgeball and fire equipment. So anyone who wants to be part of the Oakland Volunteer Fire Department, please, Mondays at 7:00 p.m., they are, they, they drill every, at Yaupo, at the Yaupo location. Also, please feel free to go to their website and ask for, ask for any questions about joining. That's all I have for now.
Mr. Salian, they can also go to the High Waterhouse, High Waterhouse as well.
Yep, thank you.
Councilman Sislinski.
Thank you, Mayor. From the library, Tai Chi for Adults continues at the library. This program is Thursday nights at 6:00 p.m. It will be held outdoors on the back patio when the weather is nice and indoors when it's rainy. This program will run every Thursday until May 8th, and registration is required. All skill levels are welcome. They also have a new series of garden arts programs on Tuesday nights at 6:30. Each are featuring a different creation. Check out their website for dates and details and to register for each session. The OPL is thrilled to welcome back the Ramapo Valley Chamber Ensemble, who will perform live on the library stage this Sunday, April 27th at 3:00 p.m. This collection of world-class musicians combine to create a truly amazing concert experience. Please call the library to register or register on their online events calendar. For young adults, they have the Anime Club on Monday, April 28th at 6:30 p.m. Registration is required. And for children, they have their regularly scheduled weekly storytimes, as well as the toddler dance party this Friday at 11:00 a.m. Registration is required. Children's yoga with the talented instructor Jay Mean on Saturday, April 26th at 10:00 a.m., followed by Art Whitmatty and Friends at 11:00. Registration for both is required. They also have the wonderful Miss Christine back next Friday with her Jiggly Wiggly music program for children at 11:00 a.m. And just a reminder to everyone who likes ebooks or downloadable audio books and music and more, check out Hoopla, Libby, and Press Reader, three of their digital content services that are entirely free with your library card. If you need help setting these up or want to learn more, call or visit the library and ask to speak with Peter.
That's all I have. Thank you. Just a quick side note, talking about the library, my wife and I went down to trivia night yesterday. It was New Jersey trivia. We didn't win, but there's a lot going on at the library, including the women playing mahjong, and there's something going on every night, so please check out the library. Thank you. Councilman.
Thank you. Mine's short. Agenda, I mean, the Arts in Oakland Committee met yesterday. The outdoor market will open on May 31st as opposed to May 3rd. They have an open mic night at the Real Brave on April 24th, May 29th, and June 26th. The juried art exhibit is still going on at the library until May 18th. And as a reminder, you can purchase some of the artwork there. And in October, they're hoping to put on a murder mystery event, which I think is going to be fun. Access for All's next meeting is on May 7th, so, and that's it.
Thank you. All right, we're up to bills to be paid.
Bills to be paid, $424,986.71. So moved.
Second. Councilman Pignotelli, thank you. Roll call, roll call.
Councilman Pignotelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilman Salian?
Yes.
Councilman Sislinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
All right, this concludes tonight's council meeting. The next Borough Council meeting will be held Tuesday, May 20th, 2025, 7:00 p.m. Right here at the Borough of Oakland Municipal Court and Council Chambers. Thank you, everybody, and have a good night. Meeting adjourned.